Welcome, everyone, to the work session of the Board of Commissioners, Haverford Township, on this September 5th, 2017. The Board of Commissioners met prior to this meeting in an executive session to discuss a legal matter. And, Ms. Sullivan, thank you for joining us tonight. Appreciate it. If those who can, if you would -- oh, I'm sorry. Roll call. Roll call.
Here. Not here. Mr. D'Amelio?
Here.
McCloskey?
Here.
Mr. Siegel?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Holmes?
Here.
Mr. McGarrett?
Here.
Mr. Wexler?
Present.
And Mr. Leiva?
Here.
Mr. Connell?
Here. If we could please stand in the Pledge of Allegiance, and I would like to, Chief, prior to the Pledge of Allegiance, if we could just take a few seconds and reflect on Texas for the people down there. Thank you.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undeniably, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief. Okay. To open up our meeting, we have the privilege tonight, the honor to have Phil Goldsmith come before us, who is the new president of the Board of the Library. Mr. Goldsmith, the podium is yours. Welcome.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to appear before you tonight. I want to personally thank you for my appointment to serve on the Board of Trustees of the Haverford Township Free Library. As you know, I was elected president of the trustees at the board's July 19th meeting. And among the most important challenges and opportunities facing the library is the renovation of our facility that was last renovated almost four decades ago. We are grateful to the commissioners for having approved funds to do a major renovation. As you know, the work on the plans for the renovation was commenced some time ago. Our prior president was notified by the commissioners by letter on February 17th, almost six months ago, to go pencils down. Since then, there has been very little work performed on the renovation plans. I am respectfully requesting that the commissioners now authorize us to go pencils up, so we can commence our planning process. Having assumed my new responsibilities almost two months ago, I have become increasingly concerned that the lack of a definite timeframe jeopardizes the project itself, as well as other parts of the library's operation, including staffing, the initiation of a director's search, planning for the providing of services when the library is eventually shut down during the renovation process, and the planning and initiation of a very important capital fund campaign. While the architect, Bernardin, has begun its pencil -- its work before pencils down, there is still almost four months of work to be done, including getting the completed architectural plans signed and sealed. That completed work is essential for construction documents to be finished, a prerequisite for us to create an RFP for invited contractors to bid. Addition, the ability to reach out to movers and more storage companies and receive definitive quotes is also hindered as long as we don't have a timeframe to beginning the plot -- to begin the planning process project in earnest, of how we will operate while the current library facility is shut down, which will be one tall order. It is our hope to begin construction by the end of August 2018. Waiting until then will allow us to keep the library open during the summer months, its busiest time of the year. Waiting till August also assures us that the municipal building will have been vacated, thus eliminating any potential conflict or inconvenience between the township and library. If we are given the go-ahead to proceed now, the funds used to pay for our architectural planning will come from the township's Keystone Grant portion, and the money the library has set aside for the project. Eventually, additional funds, of course, will come from the township, as have previously been pledged. Let me assure you that the construction of this important project, to the library and the township itself, will be done within the funds previously allocated by the township. To the extent that the renovation plans exceed that amount, it will be on us. It will be the responsibility of the library to raise additional funds. I also want to let you know that I am very impressed with the library's building committee, which is comprised of volunteer professionals, very familiar with construction, design, and planning, and who are dedicated to the Haverford Township community. We are fortunate to have these volunteers. So I thank you for your consideration, and look forward to receiving the go-ahead so we can proceed. I'd be glad to answer any questions anyone has.
Yes, Phil. With pencils up, what would you project your budget to be, kind of a range, between now and August, when you start construction? What do you anticipate?
I don't have an answer. We can get an answer. In terms of completing the four months' worth of work for the architectural renderings and so forth, my guess is that's probably about $200,000, $300,000.
But that could get -- that can come out of the Keystone Grant, right? So that's...
Come out of the Keystone, or the $500,000 that the library itself has put up, yes.
So you may not be back to this board until...
The $5 million, which eventually we'll...
Yeah. Okay. So you may not be looking for cash from us for some time?
Yes.
Given those resources?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Holmes?
Phil, do you have -- are there current plans to engage in fundraising from the library's side for purposes of, you know, increasing this project or supplementing?
Yes. As you may or may not know, the library had retained a very reputable fundraising firm, I think it's Schultz &amp; Williams, as we all know in the area. They did some preliminary work, and that contract, for reasons I'm not quite sure, was terminated. I have reviewed the report. There's a good deal of good information in there. I'm meeting with someone later this week or next week, I forget, who was one of the key fundraisers on the Haverford YMCA project, so she knows the community. I'm out reaching out to other people that I know are experienced in this field. But we have work cut out. The library's never done a major fundraising campaign, so we have to build an infrastructure. We do have a software program in place we have to start to use and so forth, but we have to raise the money.
Is it your intention to go back to this fundraising outfit that had worked?
I don't know yet. I'm not that far along in it. I want to talk to others that have, you know, have worked in this area, for example, the Haverford Y, which I think, you know, and get some sense from her and so forth. But, you know, we're going to need some sort of professional to help us. This is a major deal, and I think they estimated we could probably, in a three-year period of time, do about $1.5 million. I think that's a good start.
Anybody else?
Yeah. Phil, I would hope that in the coming months, before we go any further with the library and we talk about different funds and things like that, I hope that we'll consult the board here, and we will discuss any problems that we foresee, and we can discuss it with the library, and hopefully, we can resolve it, because we don't want to throw bad money after good money.
I couldn't agree more. And I have reached out to all of you, and I've said I'd love to sit down with you, and I'm open. I'm fortunate, I'm retired, so I have some time on my hands, or I did. Yeah, absolutely. This has got to be a joint, you know, project, and it's for the community, and, as I say, you don't bite the hand that feeds you, so I'm -- you'll find me a willing listener and talk.
That's great. Thank you, Phil.
Phil, just thank you so much. We are really lucky to have you on this board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight, and good luck. And that'll be -- that could be done, it may be next week.
I had a motion to the next Monday night's agenda. It'll be on.
I think -- I don't even know. Kelly might fill us out, since I'm the library board. We've already approved the funding and everything. I think it was the request of the township manager. I think you're the one that would just coordinate with them and say, go back. If the timetable meets what your schedule is, our vacation of this building and this complex, so we have the temporary space, I think it's coordination of staff. We've already approved the funding. The resolution and ordinances are already done. It's just a matter -- this is a staff thing.
I thought he was looking for a vote of confidence as well.
Yeah. Well, I mean, that's -- we can discuss that, but I think it's just a matter of Larry and Amy, our finance, getting those things in order for them. This is the best time to spend. If that schedule works for us, with the plan borrowing and the municipal bonding, I think that's going to be good. It gives us the extra time. It doesn't put the library under the gun to try and move out of here at the end of the year, because, you know, delay in the township building. So I think it's a fresh start, and it's just the coordination of the existing projects now becomes -- it's pretty much a staff project there.
Yeah, but I would feel a little bit comfortable, I mean...
Oh, no, we're going to -- we'll speak about it.
...add a simple motion at the next night's meeting.
We'll give you a vote of confidence, if that's what you want, but I think that's where we are. I'm gratefully enthused about this new working together between the board, the library, and the township staff to be on the same sheet of music for this whole project. That's a big plus here.
Yes, it is.
Do you know? Okay. Again, thank you very much, and good luck. Looking forward to working with you.
Got your work cut out for you now.
Oh, you're on vacation.
Careful what you wish for.
Happy anniversary?
Happy anniversary, Phil, and you can take off.
Problem is, you didn't...
I think we'll have you for another 50 years.
Thank you, Phil.
It got thrown on him.
Thanks for coming tonight. I'll talk to you later. Let's see, next on the agenda here tonight, we have the construction manager update, and Mr. Ryan -- or Mr. Brennan, excuse me, Ryan Brennan.
Thank you. Good evening. For those of you who were able to attend the walkthrough, I hope you appreciated getting a look at, you know, what it actually looks like, instead of just being up here talking about it and driving past and seeing some photos. We do not have any change orders to bring to the board for approval at this time, for this month. The contingency has increased slightly. It's up to a 63% exposure overall. Some of these costs are being negotiated and being discussed. That's why there's nothing for approval at this very moment. As far as the progress of work, the first floor is -- had an above-ceiling inspection, and the electrical underwriter will be out on Thursday. All the lights and occupancy sensors are installed, sprinkler heads are installed, barrels, registers, and diffusers are all in, and all the last bit of items are being tied up now to allow ceiling tile to be dropped in that area, and then the floor finishes will follow. All casework is wrapped up. They have installed the lockers in the two locker rooms, toilets, and all the other accessories, toilet accessories, grab bars, paper towels, et cetera, are all installed. That's on the first floor. For utilities, you may have noticed there were some traffic issues this past week. They tied in the sewer connection at Manoa Road, so that is completed. Now all the fixtures can be energized, turned on, and tested. We find out tomorrow when the gas service will be terminated into the building with the gas main, so that the generator and everything else can be started up and exercised to get ready for completion. The second floor, the drywall is about 95% complete. They're taping and finishing that, and they're going to start finishes in there very shortly, with painting followed up by ceilings. The overhead roughens are about 90% complete at this moment up there. They're going ready to finish the parking lot now. The fuel tank is done. They're going to finish the curbing, start that on Monday, finish that up, and then finish the lower parking lot to get that ready to allow the movers to come in, and at the end of the month, to be able to start moving into the building and occupying it, which will be at the same time that the punch list will be worked on by the contractors.
Unfortunately, I was not able to attend the meeting. However, like I've asked frequently over this many months here, where do we sit with this schedule? Where are we there with that?
Currently, the first floor is showing completion. The contractor submitted a schedule that was rejected. The first floor is showing completion. We've discussed it, and they -- their superintendent has agreed to it, that that'll be completed, substantially completed, by September 28th. And then the second floor remainder of the building will be the end of December. Those are kind of the dates that have held. It was originally, at the last discussion, when we were asking, and the contractor was requesting additional time because some of the impacts early on, that was early September and early December. The schedule slipped slightly from that point, about three weeks.
So all the documents, or all the scheduling, has been substantiated all through it?
Correct.
Okay. Does anybody have any further questions? Thank you very much for coming this evening.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Engel, Phil, so thank you very much for coming this evening. Appreciate. Just want to note that you're in attendance tonight. Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda here, we have the police department crime update. Chief Ayola?
Thank you, Commissioner. The police department report for the month of August.
I'm sorry, Chief, excuse me.
Chief, I apologize. Mr. President, could I ask that we go into executive session right now? It has to do with potential litigation, and it's important we have this discussion right now. And I've asked this solicitor, and she agrees.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
We will be in recess till further notice. Okay. We bring this meeting back to session, and the Board of Commissioners met in executive session to discuss a litigation matter. And moving forward, on the agenda, we do have our construction team here, and we have a discussion for that at the -- all the way down at the bottom, at the end of our agenda. So while we have you gentlemen here, what we would like to do is move that forward on the agenda to go presently. And if I could just have all those that are in favor for moving that agenda item forward?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you very much. To open this discussion, I would please, like Mrs. Swat - without, if you would please come forward to -- for opening.
Yes. The township construction manager has submitted a proposal for a construction phase contract extension that would take the overall project from the original completion date. Now, there are two floors, and there was phase completion, so this is -- might get a little bit cumbersome to walk through, but there were two floors. They were supposed to have been completed, the whole building, in September, September 17th. This construction period now goes out through the end of December, and that is for both floors. There's a, right now, a tentative substantial completion date of the first floor of September And there is a substantial completion date, we believe, December 30th, for the second, so that's the entire building. And that is, we went from September 17th to December 30th. That's the deviation in the schedule, however number of days that is, however many days. I believe the construction manager's identified that as 94 days? 94 days behind schedule.
Can you explain to us what goes into making a project, in particular this project, so far behind schedule?
I'm going to ask Mr. Engel, who's here, to speak to that in some general terms, because there have been some delays, but, you know, because we have contracts with five prime contractors on the job, just very general terms.
Evening. And again, as Lori said, we're going to do general terms, because I don't want to get too specific if there is potential claims and litigations down the road in public. But there was an initial...
If I can, remind you, this is the only chance the public gets to see and understand what's going on here. So, you know, you're smart enough to be careful, but, you know, err on the side of giving good information.
That's fine.
That people can get their hands and feet around.
So there was an initial claim submitted by the general contractor, Steubner, for 72 additional days. And some of the items were delayed in permitting. Some of them were some design changes for the site work that had to be done that created additional work, and we believe some of that was their own fault, and some of their own delays. And I believe there was a recommendation from the architect as to what should be approved, and I believe that's still in negotiations. That has not been totally settled.
It hasn't been resolved.
And for people to understand, in a situation like that with delays, it's a normal occurrence for -- actually, let's take a giant step back. You are our construction manager.
That's correct.
So you represent the township.
Yes.
And you are basically our -- you're our person on the job.
We're your eyes and ears on the job.
Watching the primes, watching everybody doing this job. So if, when you described delays, and you said there was effort to compromise, just describe to people what, you know, what that means. Because folks just hear delay, and they hear July, and then they hear December, and they're going to fear the worst.
Well, when we -- when you go out to bid, you have to assume a certain start date, so that the bidders can bid that. If things like getting final permitting slow things down, and starts, and the job starts a little later, that pushes the job back. In the construction period, if they run into unforeseen conditions, where they have to do more work than anticipated, the additional work could push them things back, especially if it's on the critical path, meaning that has to be done before future work can be done. And then if there's some design issues, which there were, and some rework that had to be done, and that created additional work, which included additional days. Then there's also the contractor's responsibility to coordinate his own subcontractors, and to make sure the work gets done in a timely manner, and they have enough manpower on the job. That can create a delay. That wouldn't be the township's delay, that would be the contractor's delay. All those things...
So you could have, so you could start working on a foundation, find out you have bedrock you didn't know was there, and that could be a one-month delay digging that kind of stuff out. That's something people can anticipate. But on a Monday where the electricians ought to show up and start putting in electrical equipment, they don't show up, that's the contractor's problem.
Absolutely. Or if there's utilities that are in the way of the foundations, that have to be redesigned and relocated before the foundations can start, that will be an unforeseen condition, and the contractor would be entitled to some delay.
So it's not abnormal for there to be, A, delays of some significance, and B, an allocation between an owner, like a township, and a contractor, between who's responsible for what?
Yeah. Unfortunately, it's pretty typical on a construction project, because it's complex. It's out in the weather, there's a lot of influences that can influence the schedule.
Is what has happened here so far, and we've all gotten calls from constituents who've said, "This is the fourth day I've driven by the project, and I don't see anybody doing anything."
There are a few people that were there, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not pretending to speak on behalf of everybody, but I think I speak with one voice on that, that we've all had that, we've all heard that complaint, we've all seen the complaint. Have the delays in this been unusual or atypical from what your experience is in other construction projects? And is there a difference between construction projects for government, where maybe we don't play enough hardball, and construction in the private industry, where maybe they have, you know, better tactics?
Well, the biggest difference between public and private is you have to open up your bids to anybody that can get a bond. In the private industry, they can select the contractors they want to work with. That's the biggest difference in the two. And that impacts sometimes the schedule, you know, that you get done. There were times on this project that we thought that it was not typical, that the project should be moving forward, and we documented that with the contractor.
And that is your function, I mean, to do that documentation and to be watching the township's back, representing the township's interests throughout this process?
Yes.
Does that 94, does that 94 days, though, seem, like, where's the bar? How would we set it? Would we say that it's where we sit at this project? Is 94 days unheard of, or is it acceptable?
It's on the upper end of...
For a building, for a construction of this size?
Construction project of this size, it's on the upper end of, it's a little more than we would have expected, for sure.
And...
Again, you know, the important thing here is, it's not easy. It's not one person or one entity that caused the delay. There's multiple reasons for all the different delays, and that's what makes it complex.
Can you just, are there some, what are some of the bigger things that were actually moved it to the, moved it up to the 94-day mark? What was some of the things that you can think of offhand that I remember before, when we met, you know, and it was three months behind?
If you could come up...
Have to come up to the podium, please. What was the driving force here for such a...
When they originally requested the 72 days, the main issues were the, as David mentioned, the permitting first, the conservation district permit was not received, and then, when that permit came out, it went from one site to a site that then became four phases of erosion and sediment control. And there was a cost associated with that, and there's also a number of days associated with that. There's also, when they started opening up the parking lot to stadium, they ran into a gas line that was there, that was not shown anywhere on any drawings or anything like that. That had to be relocated. There was an electrical service that was in the way of excavating for the bench back for the building. That also was a large item that caused the delay, as it was a cost issue and an issue of, what do we do? How do we figure this out? And what needs to happen, and, you know, keeping cost and time in mind.
Yeah, that was a minor.
Now, are you, judging by the number of days, they asked for 72, and we're at 94, what would you attribute that time to? I mean, they've asked for at maximum 72, and we're not even agreed upon that number, but we're at 92 now, or, I'm sorry, 94.
I think, as Dave has mentioned, some of it's attributable certainly to the contractor, and then some of it also could go back to some items that are, you know, whether they're errors or missions, or whether items in pre-construction that did not get communicated properly and did not get put on the drawings that are now being added after the fact, or some owner's work that occurred that then lumped in another contractor that pushed out the schedule as well.
Okay. Now, is that, that's on them, right?
On all of them, if there's...
Well, I know that the gas line and some of the other things, that's, that would be...
But if there's something that was, you know, something that's been added, you know, when you look through the cost log, all those items are cost-issue items, they're all associated, they all come with time as well, typically.
Correct.
Something that you catch down the line, and it's a, you know, material change or something like that, that, you know, isn't installed already, but a lot of it is at work.
Okay. But without asking you to, because I don't think you want to engage in any day-by-day analysis with us or allocation, what's important for the public to know, and frankly, it's important for all of us to know, is to make sure that whatever the ultimate resolution is, I assume that every single day of delay, our construction manager is documenting what needs to be documented, you know, putting the blame where the blame ought to go, and just kind of laying the paper trail that's necessary for what I'm sure is every inevitable fight between a contractor and an owner at the end of the job that has a decent delay. Can we count on that?
Yeah. We have documentation. We don't have every single day of documentation, but we have every single day of what happened on the job that can be used to document why the delay occurred. So in other words, if it's a beautiful day out and the excavator didn't show up, we have that documented. So that's kind of documentation. As I mentioned to Lori, it's probably a good time to sit down and come up with...
We don't have every single day of documentation, but we have every single day of what happened on the job that can be used to document why the delay occurred. So, in other words, if it's a beautiful day out and the excavator didn't show up, we have that documented.
Okay.
So, that's kind of documentation. As I mentioned to Lori, it's probably a good time to sit down and come up with a notice to the contractor because, as we said, when we negotiated but didn't finalize it, where the schedule moved, we had picked a September 4 completion date. And that held all the way through to the end of July, and then they shifted it. Well, September 5, I think we should go on notice that the job should have been done on September 5, and it's not. And now it's beyond that point.
Well, say that into the camera in case they're watching, and then also, obviously, discuss this with our assistant township manager. Because it would seem to me, I agree with you, that the time has come, and my concern is just to make sure the time has not come and gone, to put these folks on notice of, you know, of the attribution of any of this delay. And, right, I understand excavators are supposed to be here on a sunny Monday, and they're not here on a sunny Monday. But to the extent that the prime wasn't there that day because they were doing something else and they expected the excavator to come, I assume somebody told them that they didn't come. And I know that's just an example for the purpose of this discussion, but I'm assuming whatever diary you're keeping, and I'm not suggesting every single day you put them on a notice of a violation, but any kind of event that's taken place that isn't apparent to them, I assume you are routinely advising them.
Everything's apparent to them. They're there every day. They know what's going on. So, again, I think the key now is to put them on notice, structure that, you know, have that come from the township, you know, solicitor potentially, that, you know, even though we haven't finally negotiated your claim, your schedule on... In January showed a September 4 completion date, and you haven't made that September 4 completion date.
What?
Well, you're already...
How much confidence can we have that they are now... That they are proceeding on a predictable schedule and that there's no more foreseeable, unforeseeable circumstances that are going to come up here and screw this up? And let's assume we don't have 100-year storm, a three-feet-of-snow in October, or an earthquake. I mean, are the things like having permit problems, finding a gas line you didn't know about, foundational issues, those are all kind of early threshold issues before you could break ground. Are we past the majority of those things that can now delay the finish of this job?
I believe so. And we think it's very reasonable they can get done the first floor by September 28. There's only one issue that we have a big concern on, and we put them on notice, is in order to install the floor finishes, that concrete has to be in a certain percentage, moisture percentage. And we told them that they need to do whatever it takes to get that. And if it needs using additional type of adhesive or sealer, or get additional air conditioning in there, they need to do that. That's the only thing that we know of right now that could hold things up. Everything else is...
Well, at least we're not in hurricane season, so it won't be wet every single day from now until October 31st.
You think the second floor should be done in less than three months? There's, you know, there's not that much more to finish up, and three months is a long time period.
Well, since we, hopefully all of us are going to be sitting on that second floor, I'm hoping the concrete cures before they put the floor on it.
The second floor is going to be better than the first. Slab on grade is typically where you have a little more trouble getting the moisture percentage.
Okay. Has the gentleman, has this discussion been satisfied for you at this time?
Yeah.
I would say so right now. Anybody wish anything further? Gentlemen, Mr. Engel, Mr. Brennan, thank you very much for coming this evening. We appreciate you coming up and answering our questions.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the, as we said, the police department crime update. Unfortunately, Chief Viola had to leave due to a situation, and therefore, I believe the township manager is going to file this report.
Yeah, I think I can figure this one out. The chief left me the report, and I'll go through it quickly and see if I can answer any questions. But police department issued 212 parking tickets for the month. There was 240 traffic citations and 166 written warnings. There was a robbery on the August of 17th, the CVS. Started out as a retail theft. It was a suspect was a white female between 50 and 60. She implied she had a knife when confronted by a store employee outside, but there was no weapon observed. There was also an attempted strong-arm robbery on August the 17th. On a SEPTA bus, along Westchester Pike, passenger reported being confronted by two other passengers, went into his pockets and attempted to take the cellphone. There were five burglaries for the month. 100 block of Ellis Road, 400 block of Colfax, 600 block of Lakeside Avenue, 17 East Manoa Road, and the 600 block of Westchester Pike. On Ellis Road, it was an unsecure residence. $1,300 was taken. On Colfax, entry was through an unlocked first-floor window. There was jewelry and change out of a jar taken. August 25th, Lakeside Avenue, again, it was an unsecure residence. $13 was taken, along with a backpack worth $50. Manoa Road, it was 4th entry. A PlayStation was taken, but that was a... There was an arrest. Another tenant was confessed to those charges. And the last one, again, on the Westchester Pike, there was a hidden key used, the Gold Watch, change container, some beer, and that was also addressed by the police department. It was a grandson who was a juvenile, and I guess the victims refused to make any charges. There's four attempted burglaries. 900 block of railroad avenue, noise was heard at the front door. Suspect observed and walked away. On, again, the 11th of the month, 1200 block of Bon Air Road, reported an attempted burglary. Further investigation showed this to be a theft by an employee who's being charged with the theft. 400 block of Kenmore Road, kitchen window was pushed up overnight, and they have prints and sent that off to be identified. And then the last one, it was 1700 Vernon Road, handprints were located on an unlocked window. Vehicle theft, there was four. Tumberge Road, although it was unfounded, owner filed a false report and is being charged by the police. 400 block Sagamore, unsecure vehicle, keys inside. That vehicle was recovered in Philadelphia. 200 block of Myrtle Avenue, unlocked, where keys were left inside. That vehicle was also recovered in Philadelphia. Last one was on Pearson Lane. Keys were in an unlocked vehicle. An adult and a juvenile were arrested when the vehicle was recovered in Philadelphia. And last, there was theft from vehicles. 800 block of Grod Place, unlocked. Medical equipment was taken. 100 block of Mellert, unlocked door and loose change was taken. And then another one on 100, a Mellert, was unlocked, loose change. And 100 block of Gilmore Road, again, the vehicle was unlocked, gift cards and a checkbook. And that's all I have for the chief.
Thank you, Mr. Gentili.
Just give me a second here. I just wanted to warn people with the police report. On the other night at the Glen, there was two juveniles who were involved in a fight. And the call came in as a possible knife. Person who was viewing it from across the street said that it was a possible knife. That turned into, on Facebook, confirmed stabbing in the park.
At the Glen.
Yeah, at the Glen. So, Facebook blew up. People, I got... I must have gotten five or six messages within a 30-second period, and I called the chief, and he's, "No, absolutely not." And he took me through, so I messaged everybody back. And then Sergeant Hagan, not Sergeant Hagan, Deputy Chief Hagan, wrote a post to Facebook to tell people that there wasn't. But just be really careful when you're posting things. There's a lot of people... I mean, that post went from two or three to 150, and then after Sergeant Hagan, the post stopped. So, Sergeant, again, Deputy Chief Hagan. So, be careful what you're posting. Make sure that it's true. Just because you may... Make sure you confirm that. You can always call, or, I mean, people called me and texted and emailed about that issue. But make sure that you... It is confirmed before you put that out on Facebook, because a lot of people were scared. I mean, a stabbing in at the Glen, which is... And the Glen is inside of a neighborhood, so something like that is very scary. But so, everybody knows there was no stabbing. Neither juvenile had a knife on them, and there was no knife recovered. We even had the police dogs out there searching. So, just keep that in mind when you're trying to get the, you know...
Mr. President...
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Holmes?
Would Chief Viola... Would he have wanted us to announce tomorrow's arraignment?
I think we should. I mean, it's public...
Yeah. I mean, it involves, I guess, it involves the murder in the sixth ward, so...
We were just going to have a press conference tomorrow. It's a press conference tomorrow?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, don't do it.
No.
The press conference is before the arraignment?
Yes.
Oh. Well, tune in tomorrow. The Delaware County District Attorney will be giving...
Press conference.
...news about a suspect in a highly publicized and very tragic and violent act in Ardmore, and we'll all stay tuned.
Who may or may not be arraigned tomorrow morning.
Afternoon.
I'm sorry, in the afternoon.
But what is worth noting, as long as we're on the subject, is that through the efforts of Havreford Township Police Department, the Philadelphia Police Department, the U.S. Customs... I'm sorry, the U.S. Marshals Office, and great cooperation between state, federal, and local authorities, the suspect in the murder of John Lee on the evening of, gosh, was it July 29?
29.
Was apprehended in Georgia, has been extradited from Georgia, and arrangements have been made for the suspect who is in custody to be arraigned for the actions in Philadelphia, as well as for the murder in Ardmore.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Gentili, utility work?
Yes, thank you. As this board and our residents throughout the community know, over the last year, we've had an extensive amount of utility work being done throughout the township. Unfortunately, at times, my office is becoming a spokesperson, which is inappropriate for the PICO folks. So, I just wanted to bring, again, some updated information to this board and to the community. As you're all aware, again, about a year ago, PICO invested in close to a $5 million gas line system enhancement. And basically, what they're doing is we have pre-1900 cast iron gas pipes throughout the township. And this is a big part of... It's almost like $150 million initiative that PICO is doing for infrastructure improvements. So, this is like a five-year project for Havreford Township. And it is troubling at times because it's creating some quality of life issues for our residents, but it's a necessary improvement because it is an old town, and we have a lot of old infrastructure. So, it will improve services for the residents throughout Havreford Township, and it also improved the safety. So, to give you an idea, next year, PICO will be coming to us and giving us some road permits, and it'll be doing approximately five miles of additional gas mains. And again, that project will last for the next four, possibly five years. They're completing up a lot of work that they're doing now in sections throughout the township. One important thing that I need to get out to the public and to radiate to the board, under no way are we, the township, my staff, or this board becoming spokespersons for PICO's representatives. And in no way is the township taking any ownership or have any ownership of these initiatives. This is a PICO project. And they are also working with Aqua, because there's a number of Aqua projects that are going to happen over the next few years. So, I know it's frustrating for the residents at times. We do our very best to report, one, when we get it, any information relating to this PICO project throughout the township. But they literally change by the hour. You know, I met PICO today, and they gave us an update on where they are on Eagle Road, and where they are in Westgate Hills, and where they are in different parts of the township. Literally, that information they gave us today on the open up of particular road, that work could... Or the timetable could change. They just don't know what they're going to be dealing with from time in, time out, so...
Larry, I hate to interrupt you, but what are they doing about the damage that they're causing to residents' properties? How are they documenting that so that residents know that eventually the cracked pavements or curves are going to be fixed?
Steve, that would be a question for them, but what they tell us...
Can they come here?
Excuse me?
Can they come here?
I don't think it's appropriate for them to come here. It's really at this juncture...
We could question them?
You could certainly question. Am I going to have to have them come next month at the next work session? But they... I am confident that they do document any damage, but it's up to the residents. No different than you having an issue with a utility company. If you're not happy with Verizon or Comcast, there's a process for you to go through that. It's called the Public Utility Commission. And that's what we tell the residents when they call our office. If they're not getting satisfaction from any utility company, they should follow it up with the Public Utility Commission, and then they will get... We cannot... The township staff can't be the in-between. Now, they identified most of that damage they do, and they're supposed to be communicating it with the residents. I do know that any work that they do prior to establishing any work on any township road or state road, they issue informations. They drop it off at the door, whether it's a resident or a business. So, all that information, telling them contacts, who the residents should contact, are in that. But if you... If this board would wish...
Larry, do they have...
We put that on the website.
Do they have an obligation to give that, at least one copy of that, to us, to the township?
They do. We actually do. When we get that, we forward it out to the board.
But they don't give it to the local... They don't give it to the ward commissioner. And a lot of times, when that starts or something, you know, if I got to look for that information, I have to reach out to your office.
We can certainly ask them to provide a better form of communication so we can get that out. But as far as putting it on the website, no, because then we then are telling the residents we're taking ownership of this. This has got... They have a... PICO has their own public utility or their public relations department. If we put information out on the website, then we are... Potentially, if that information changes, Mr. Connell, then we're not providing adequate information to the residents. It literally could change day to day.
Who their representative... Who's their consultant representative?
Larry, can I ask...
How it's being done.
Can I ask you about the road resurfacing program? You know, the thing I hate is when we resurface a road, and then some utility comes along and opens it up. So, has that been an issue, or how do we make sure that doesn't happen?
It has not. When I came on board, we established immediately from 2007... I can't tell you what happened before that, but I have a map that's in my office. It was developed by Mr. Penoni's office. And every road that we surf... That we resurface in Havreford Township, Township own road, we have a map. We have that colored. It's a color-coded map, and it's the dates. Any road that a utility company opens up within five years of that road being resurfaced, they bought the entire road. We meet with Aqua and PICO twice a year. When I say we and myself, Mr. Doherty, and sometimes Mrs. Whittup, if she's available, we'll sit with them, and they have that. They have that. It's updated every year. And they know that if they have to, they'll work around that as much as they can.
But they're responsible for repaving, not just...
Curb to curb.
Curb to curb. So, for example, on Buck Lane, they're going to be going down a portion of Buck Lane on not quite in the gutter, probably about two feet off the edge of the road. Are they responsible for paving a third of the road? Are they responsible for paving just that strip? Or are they responsible...
20% of the road. If they have an opening more than...
So, they have to... To the center line?
Yes.
So, the center line will be paved.
And a lot of this... A lot of the work that they're doing over the next five years, it actually will save the township some funds as well, because they're doing so many roads. There's a lot of roads that we would eventually have to resurface 100% of the road.
Yeah.
And then we... Now, we have to just do 50%.
Yeah.
One of the things that we did last road program is we looked at, in fact, Commissioner McCluskey's street was an example. We knew that that street was one of the roads that was supposed to be paved in 2017. We held off. We set the money aside, and we paid PICO. When PICO went through, normally, they would only have to do 50% of that road. They paved 100% of it. So, we work as a team... They paved 100% of it. So we work as a team when we do our road program.
That's great.
We completed our road program in 2017. We don't have another one until 2019. We do one every other year.
Right. Thank you.
Larry, just to sort of reiterate some of what you're saying, because, I mean, I know, in my ward, there's been a significant amount of PICO work done. And just so the residents know, I mean, we share, and I know Mr. Gentili shares in some of the frustration that everybody has been feeling. But, you know, the township is in a difficult position, because we don't want to be a spokesman for PICO, but we also recognize that these are needed improvements and infrastructure improvements that need to be done. So on one level, we don't want to speak for PICO, but we also, we also don't want to diminish the project or its need. But on the other hand, it's important for residents to know that in no way does PICO come to us and seek permits. It's not like a regular contractor who would come to the township to get a permit to work. I mean, PICO is run by the Public Utility Commission, and that is who has jurisdiction over PICO. We do not have jurisdiction over where PICO goes. And sort of taking Havreford Township out of it and looking at a broad signal, because PICO deals with gas and electric, as a community, we wouldn't want PICO to have to ask Springfield, Havreford, Upper Darby, and go to every single township that they needed to work on for gas mains to get approval from all of those local boards. So it logically makes sense. Although it makes logical sense, we understand that it is immensely frustrating that this project has been going on for the better part of two years in Eagle Road. And, you know, we hear the complaints, we can pass them on to PICO, but we don't have any control. We can't force them to do it. So it's beneficial to let us know, but it's also beneficial for the residents themselves to lodge complaints if they have them with the Public Utility Commission, because that is the governing body for PICO. The township has no authority over PICO on this project. They don't come to us to ask for the permits for the road. They don't come to us to ask where their equipment needs to be stored. Anything they do for us in that regard is purely voluntary. So, you know, I, we all understand the frustration. I certainly do, and I've been, you know, I've been diverted and driving around town, and, you know, the equipment has been on my street, and I've heard the trucks at night. So we understand the frustration, but our hands really are tied in terms of making change.
Yeah, just to tie into what you said, we had an issue over on Lanark Avenue where they came in and just clear-cut 30 trees, just cut them right down, because they're going to put in new poles. Now, they didn't tell anyone ahead of time that they were bringing in somebody to cut these trees down, and 30 trees were cut down, and nobody knew what was going on. So, you know, I'm playing, you know, catch-up with a lot of these issues. So, because they can come in, and they can cut them down, and they don't have to tell us what they're doing. So we had the Lori and, Lori, is Lori there? Yeah. So Lori got in touch with PICO, and we worked out what we were going to do over there. But, I mean, for a couple of days, nobody knew what was happening. They did it on a Friday night, too, like a Friday evening.
I agree with what everyone's saying, and I agree that our hands are tied somewhat, but there's a significant amount of work that's being performed in the first ward. And there's a lot of frustration, because, you know, there's damage to a lot of properties. And I think the one thing that we could do is just, if they could come and give an update so that the residents hear what they're doing, what they're doing, not that we're doing anything, but they're doing. Whoever, I mean, whoever took Ralph Brown's place, maybe he can come in. Is he facilitating it?
The individual was appointed today from PICO, so there'll be a press, again, once I receive an official notification of the gentleman's name. I was told today who he is. I don't know him. I never met him. But it'll be official, I think, tomorrow morning, once I get that forwarded. So maybe that'll be a good timing when, once he's official, I can invite him next month at a work session.
Yeah, invite him next month, and we could talk about, you know, what people need to do if they have damage to their property, and at least he can hear some of those concerns and give suggestions and timelines.
If they're doing that much work, they may want to come here, you know, at the commissioner's meeting or to a work session and tell us what they're doing and what their future projects are, so that we're ahead of the game, not 30 trees down and people very upset that, and they don't know what happened.
They did, I was going to say, they did put a program together for us several years ago at the, was it Chestnut Walt School? When we had the issues with a lot of the trees and what have you, they did come out and do a community public relations program.
Yep, I was there.
Which I thought was an excellent program, if they have an opportunity, if they would like to put something like that together regarding all our utilities in the township, that would be great.
Larry, with the understanding, as you said, that, you know, these timetables change based on when they open it up and what they find in there, have they, what is the latest timeframe for the work that's on Eagle Road now?
As of today, 10 o'clock today, when we met, the main will be, pretty much the main along Eagle Road is done. They'll start services, connecting to the services. Unfortunately, it's still going to be nighttime work, but it should have less of an impact. It'll be less of equipment there. And they're telling us that that should be with no issues arising mid-October for Eagle Road for their completion. The good news on Glendale Road, they finished today. That main is in service. All the base repair will start hopefully by next week, and then it'll be followed up by PennDOT, who will do a full pave.
Resurfacing.
Glendale Road will be paved from Westchester Pike to O'Hara. So the two major state roads, the updates as of today, 10 o'clock.
That road is in really bad shape.
Larry, without, just not only PICO, but Aqua, in my ward, Aqua's done a significant amount of work. Do they have, are they going to do the 50% paving projects on the residential streets?
They have to, yes.
But is it going to be done before freezing time this year?
Well...
Because these things are, they're as bad as Eagle Road, some of the side streets.
Yeah, we can't guarantee that. Again, remember, the policy is, if they do a continued trench, which most of the work that's being...
Most of the work's finished now.
Yeah, most of those, but if they do a road opening, it's got to be three within 100 feet, correct, Dave?
That's a township ordinance, yeah.
If they do three within 100 feet, then they have to do a half million overlay. But most of the work that they're doing, when they're putting in mains in, yes, 90% of it will be a half million overlay. Will be done before the winter. They can't guarantee this, because they have to do a base repair first. It has to sit for an amount of time. As long as the plants don't close, it's their goal to do that as well.
Yeah, because the patching work is poor. We're going to have a lot of water infiltration and freezing. It's just going to get worse.
I don't remember that the patchwork is awful for everybody along Glendale Road. The patchwork there was awful.
Yeah.
All of it.
It's worse on the side streets.
Yeah, I know.
Well, once Glendale Road's done, then it's become a speed highway, and the chief will be down.
All right, one more thing. To give you an example, like, they did Westgate, they did Westgate Road, all right?
Yes.
Okay. So they did Wallahell Lane, I think, a year ago, and they ran the main, they ran the meters to the homes. I'm on the corner, so they didn't do mine, right? But then they did Westgate Road. Nobody came to me to say they were going to put a main in. They sent me a letter. They're going to shut my gas off.
Apparently, Mr. D'Amelio, you didn't listen to my speech when I just told you.
No, I'm just saying.
Paul PICO.
I did. There was a number on there. I called them.
I promise you, I will have the new representative...
But I'm trying to show you how it's, it can be frustrating and confusing, and residents, you know, we just need to guide them to, you know, I mean, you want me to call the Public Utilities Commission? My gas is off. I'm calling you up.
I think Mrs. Whittup...
I'm going to come over to your house in the winter time.
Well, listen, why, if I could, just...
I'm sure, Mr. D'Amelio, that your constituents are going to be happy to know that you've been as victimized by PICO as the rest of them have. So at least you have that going for you.
Mr. Gentili, you have a follow-up here?
Just a couple of little things. I'm sorry, I didn't think that was going to take so long. But the, just, you all aware, we've implemented a lot of the grants in the township. One of the big initiatives that Mr. Penone's been helping us with and his staff is the multimodal grant on Darby Road. Phase one was completed. Phase one consisted of, from the middle school, the new crosswalk, all-new ADA accessibility, both in front of the school. So the school benefited greatly from our multimodal grant. Phase two, they'll start, well, it will go from the orthodontist down to the library. And then there'll be a new crosswalk coming across over to 1502 Darby Road. So that should, we're hoping to have all that done late, late November, sometime in December. But part of phase one, and that was a big, big component of, we installed 240-foot of underground basin control for rate control, meaning when we have flooding issues, Dave, I'm probably not going to be as eloquent as you, but when the water goes in, it's rate controlled before it goes into our storm system, slows the water down, improves specifically any of the areas downstream there.
Down Mill Road.
So it certainly helps. Then in phase two, there's also going to be stormwater improvements along the new streetscape, where all those new plants that we do, water will run off and do, again, rate control in there as well. So that's a phenomenal initiative. We actually just put in for another multimodal grant, Dave and his staff helped us with. And if we are lucky enough to get that, it would be a similar project that will go from the Brick and Brew down to Benedict Avenue. And then we also met with PennDOT and Delaware Valley Regional Planning and the Delaware County Planning Commission. Last week, Mr. Penone and his staff met with me out at PennDOT. We're putting in for a TAP grant. I know it's not probably called TRAP anymore, but it's the Transportation Alleviation Projects, something like that, Dave. And that would be for us to build a footbridge over Manoa Road, so the Penzi Trail that we have now, it will continue that all the way down and dump into the end of the LA Fitness. That initiative right now, again, they're not exact numbers, but they're close to it, $1.4 million. So if we're lucky enough to get that grant, there is going to be a commitment on the township somewhere in the area, about $300,000 to $400,000. The good news is, there are a lot of benefits, but that would be a worthwhile investment. But we're looking, if we get approval, that's a 2019 project, what I'm being told. That's the updates, Dave. Did you want to add anything to them?
If the board has any questions, you say that.
No, I just, I just want to reiterate how...
This, hold on a second, stop.
I just want to reiterate how that Darby Road from the junior, from the middle school all the way down to Mill, that's at the top edge of the Chatham-Glen Water Basin.
Yep, that's the top of what we call a drainage basin. That's the top of that drainage basin.
Exactly, right.
Any time, any drop of water that falls in front of the middle school, as Larry indicated, gets intercepted by the basin we put in, held back, where it would have ran down unimpeded to Chatham. So we're starting, we're doing what we call stormwater management. We're doing it at the top of the basin. We're kind of lucky to jobs at the top of the basin. That gave us a little better, a little more straightforward impact on mitigating that.
And that, so, and this is that, part of that Chatham-Glen project that we've been working on now for nine, or eight years, that, and I can't thank, you know, the township staff and Penone Associates for absolutely, I know it's been grueling. I know, I'm sorry that I have been at your necks for, you know, this long or what have you, but it's absolutely a project that is so beneficial to the community, and I greatly appreciate all the thousands of dollars, and not to mention the hundreds of man-hours that went into that and what have you.
In that phase, as Larry mentioned, we have, and we did some of these down in the Ardmore section, too, we're putting in those stormwater planters, the green infrastructure, the tree planters, we intercept the waters, it runs right off the sidewalk, put them right into the planters, we put modified soils below the trees in the planters, helps retain it and recharge it. So it's pretty good stuff. I mean, it's all the, at the bleeding-edge green infrastructure, but right in the solid, solid front of it.
It's great stuff. It's great stuff. It's how Havreford Township is being committed to address stormwater management and not the climate change and what have you.
Okay. Now, I did want to mention on the other grant, on the...
Is my mascara running?
Is that, that footbridge across, across there will give those students who go to school a safe way to get to the middle school and the high school without having to cross Manoa Road, which is dangerous in that section there. And for all those who live on Woodland Drive and on Naylor's Run and on Lanark Avenue, a big thanks goes out to Peter Puglinese, who really pushed to get this and helped me a lot on this, on this particular project, and helped the township a lot on the project. Also, in that area, not only that, is we're going to put in some stormwater management into that trail area so that the water goes into the ground, and a lot less of that water is coming down onto Woodland Drive and getting, becoming a problem for some of the basements of the people on Woodland Drive. So, big thanks to Pete, who's, we're working through some rain gardens, berm, and some other things over on Lanark Avenue, and that bridge across with the trail, which would bring, it's a safe route to school. Anybody in that area who has children who would want to go to Bailey Park can walk across there without having, you know, without taking your life into your own hands and crossing Manoa Road. And you'll be able to cross Manoa Road over the footbridge if you want a sidewalk on Manoa Road. So you'll be able to walk up and across and then back down if you need to. Because it is so dangerous there, it's hard for people to see when they're coming, they're coming down the hill, and it's an angle. It's hard for you to cross that street. I mean, you're taking your life into your hands. So this would be, this would be a big...
Are you talking about where the old trestle used to be?
Yeah.
And what are they going to do there?
They're going to put a bridge across, a walking bridge.
Oh, they haven't done that yet.
No, no, they have not done it. It's 2000, probably 2019, if we do get the grant, because it's over $1 million.
It's very promising, because what you said is a good point, Mr. Levis, and I failed to mention that. The proximity of Chatham-Glen School, the middle school, and Manoa School all fit in within the radius that qualifies that for Safe to Schools grant. So it's very attractive, and it was very, received very on a positive note from the Planning Commission and as well as Delaware Valley Regional Planning.
So today, if you have, if you have a child who is, who has, you know, who's in a wheelchair, who is in something like, they can't get across there easily, whereas then if you, they were on that trail, they could go up and down, they can ride their bikes across, that sort of stuff, and not have to worry that they're crossing Manoa Road. And there's no park in that section, so they have to cross the street to go to Bailey.
I totally agree with you. The only thing you're going to have to be cautious of is you remember, they took the trestle down because they put bus routes on. You're going to have to make the trestle higher.
The bridge is going to be higher than 14-foot, so that, so that the buses and trucks, it used to get caught. I remember it was on a regular basis, you would, they'd be deflating the tires to get the trucks to go through there on a regular basis.
Anything additional? Is that it? Okay. Moving forward, next week, we do have several ordinances and a resolution. The Brittany Lane dedication is a second reading. Any comment? Questions? The, let's see, we have the property tax credit for the volunteer firefighters. That is a first reading.
Just one thing on that. We're here where it says, whereas the annual cost to, it says tow. So you're at the fourth whereas, it says the annual cost tow Havreford Township taxpayers, just a typo. You just got to take the E out.
There's some other things. The final, the document that we have in our package is probably not quite the final document yet. There's still some things with the criteria. It's also desire the township staff, instead of having to make this an annual reappointment or resolution, that we do it a one-time thing, so we get the criteria tightened down from the Bureau of Fire. I think we've got one or two iterations of this thing floating around. My understanding as the committee member, that the retention committee forwarded to the Bureau of Fire for approval of the criteria method. So it's at the Bureau of Fire level now out of the retention committee. So that should be the bureau that's going, working with the township staff, aiming on the finance to do that. So we'll get the language cleared up for next week and have the final draft of that going.
Okay.
So, which was already voted on by the Bureau of Fire.
Patching to the tow.
But there's some changes.
We're waiting for data as to what this was actually going to amount to.
Yeah, well, it depends, it depends on how many people meet the criteria.
Mrs. Cupperton actually has that.
There's a rough guess.
Actually, excuse me, members of the Bureau of Fire did come and give us some information that was helpful. All five fire companies gave us who they thought was eligible for this at this point in time. Came to approximately 105 volunteers in the township right now, and we're equating that. We took everybody's assessment of the property they own and a 20% credit. Came to about $28,000 would be the financial impact of doing this. be the financial impact of doing this.
Which is, I think we even talked about that last month or what have you, and that's-
All right, I'll just give you the-
Quite small.
Bill, are you doing?
What, I mean, it's, there's, you know, you could look at statistics.
There's a couple of other things in there that I-
Yeah, there's some, there's some language in there that talks about the value of, you know, a paid department, what it would save, and that, that doesn't belong in a resolution like that. We don't have hard data, we haven't done a formal study on the exact savings, so it's not appropriate that any numbers like that be part of something that we would pass. It's just a guess, it's, it's the work of a couple of individuals saying that, you know, we think of this based on other things. But we, we know it's a substantial savings throughout, not only here in Havreford, but throughout the Commonwealth, because most of the municipalities, non-first-class cities, are all volunteer departments. So, we know it's a substantial savings. I mean, you guys, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure out, we're spending two million dollars on fire trucks this year in one year. So, over time, if you add the personnel, the staff, that twenty-four-by-seven, it's a very significant amount that the volunteer organization saved us, but it's not an exact science. It's, it's in the millions of dollars, but it's probably, we don't have exact figures, but that doesn't belong in that resolution anyway, for the credit anyhow, so.
Okay, so they're gonna redo, because I have, there was a couple of things, but I'll just-
And if it's okay with the board, myself and Mr. Wexler are gonna be at the Bureau of Fire meeting at the end of the month. What I would like to recommend, that we take, again, because there's so many versions, been going back and forth, that I'm meeting-
We've probably put this off for another month or something.
I would like to go back to the Bureau of Fire with Mr. Wexler, and we sit down and have them formally approve what's in front of us, and then we, myself and Bill can come back.
I was just gonna say, there's two elements that aren't in any version that's going around, and actually, we had some education from McNichol Byrne on a couple of different things to put in. One is a process for appeal that has to be in the final version, and the other, Kelly, can you, what is the other, the?
I don't recall off the top of my head.
There's another minor thing, but-
Some guidance came down from the state on it.
Yes, it did.
So, we provided it to the township to look at it. So, if you wanna delay it another month to look at that guidance.
I mean, we'd wanna get, I'd rather do it right once than do it twice.
Yeah, and I, there should be no problem once myself and Mr. Wexler go to Bureau of Fire, we get the recommendations from Kelly, and Amy's been pretty much spearheading this for me. We'll come back and have this, this should be no issue for the October agenda for your-
Is there one way we can get in for the 2018?
Absolutely, should be.
Budget.
No, no, no problem for us to do that.
Yep, that's our concern. Mrs. Cuperson, thank you very much for, I know it's been like, two and a half years putting all this together. Thank you.
Are we interested in lobbying the county to enact something similar to give firefighters relief at the county level?
This was done at the state level.
This was the state that passed it in November.
Yeah, Kelly can-
And the state-
But there are no state property taxes.
And the state act only authorizes this for municipal real estate taxes, not for county real estate taxes.
Where's school district?
Couldn't get the blessings of the school districts, is a problem.
It was a school district, it's actually-
The school district's a different story. I mean, I think the county, you know, and the fact is, a third to a half of our bill is a trash fee and a, and our sewer, which won't be affected by this, won't be affected by this discount. I think we should all lobby the state to amend this, to include the counties, because they would get, they actually would get just about the same amount of relief from the county, since the county tax, the entire county tax bill is based solely on your property, as opposed to our township bill, which has several elements to it that aren't based on your mileage.
Mrs. Cuperson?
My memory came back to me. The other concept that we do need to add that's not in any version that you've seen, is just the fact that this is more of a refund as opposed to a credit. It's called a credit, but the bill will go out to all the eligible persons as it is today. It'll be billed in full, it will be paid in full, and then within a certain time period, we will issue a check back to the property owner for the credit. It is, even though it is called a credit throughout all the legislation, it is really a rebate.
Can't the county do anything?
Specifically, the law statute.
Our state hard at work.
Yeah, it's actually very specific that there's no mention of credit on the tax bill. That was the, the information that came out from PSATs, not to mention credit on the tax bill.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Cuperson, thank you.
That was so somebody-
Mrs. Solomon, thank you very much for that. Okay, we have, is anybody, we have, one, two, three, we have one on the RHM, the Gathering in Parks, Backyard Hens. Does anybody have any questions, concerns regarding any of those documents, any of those ordinances?
I do have the backyard hens.
Backyard hens?
Okay.
Okay, that's P seventeen, twenty seventeen?
Yeah, just in number six, just a typo here, it says owners should be owners, in parentheses. The S needs to be added there.
On number six?
Number six, the coop and the attached pen must conform to all relevant property setbacks for accessory structures as specified in subsection forty-nine, ten dot B.
Unless written-
Unless written in agreement adjoining property owner or owners. So, you gotta put the S in there.
So, it'd be bracket S?
Yeah, bracket S. And that's, that's all I, that's all it was.
Okay.
Other than that, looks good.
Look, there was a reason why we, have we gone back and done the analysis as to why we instituted this prohibition in the first place and how we match our neighboring municipalities who have restrictions on chickens?
We, we have. We, she came here the other day and came here at last work session and spoke about it, or health.
I, I, I admit, I did not make the last work session, so I'm assuming from the silence of my colleagues-
Health Department, the Health Department was here.
They were here.
Yes, absolutely, and they spoke.
She knew what Lower Marion did, but she was gonna research what upper daughter, Springfield and stuff.
Well, which they don't actually have one, I think, who instituted it for one year? And now it's her, I thought it was Lower Marion, they did a pilot program, but now they have it.
What's it?
No, no, that wasn't Lower Marion.
There wasn't Lower Marion?
Lower Marion, Lower Marion's allows for two chickens, two small, small fowl are allowed. It was somewhere in New Jersey where they, they started it as a-
It was local.
Uh, wasn't that local?
Chris, I think Mr. Bates could give us all those answers possibly next week at the meeting.
Or was it? Yeah, something, it was in New Jersey, am I correct?
Had it.
Yeah, yeah, it was. And they had tried it out on a, on a temporary basis for one year, and after that one year, they found that they had no issues, and so they, they made it law at that point. So, that may be something we wanna do, to give it an opportunity to see what, how things work out, and that if it actually doesn't cause a-
Where?
An issue, and then we can make it law when, when it doesn't.
Okay, food for thought. Next week, that, if anybody wishes to speak on this, on agenda item, certainly come up.
I have a question about the park ordinance, first.
Park ordinance, okay.
Yeah, two things. Do we ever, it includes fireworks, do we ever grant permits for fireworks in the parks?
Never have, not in my thirty-five years.
Tim has said no, not in his thirty-five years.
So, why, why not eliminate the fireworks as even an option? If we're, if we haven't done it and considering the safety issues, I'm, I'm a little concerned. And then the other thing is, we have, and I, I, look, there are twenty instances in the, in our ordinances, and this is one of them, that mentions the Township Secretary, but it's never defined. And I don't believe anyone applies to the Township Secretary for a permit in the park, so why not designate the proper entity?
You know, if we're gonna go back and forth-
From the Township Secretary. It doesn't. And who is the Township Secretary?
I think it's-
That's it.
But it doesn't, it doesn't say it in our charter or in the code. That, that's the interesting thing. Nowhere is the Township Secretary defined, but it appears twenty times. I assume it's Mr. Gentili, but, you know, it doesn't say so.
I thought it was Secretary or Township designee.
This doesn't say that, that's why I raise it, because I looked at it and said this is unusual.
Well, I was under the understanding that the Township Secretary was large until-
But we all have an understanding, but we don't have it anywhere in our-
So, you wanna add that to?
Do we wanna add that to?
Well, I think it should be the Township Manager then, or his designee, because that is defined in the code, and I would remove fireworks since-
But I wouldn't, but the only thing we're doing in this text amendment is E.
Correct, but while we're correcting it, why not address those, the other points?
You wanna do housekeeping?
Yeah, I mean, if, 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 as Mr. Danny says, we've never issued a permit in thirty-five years, why have that even in the ordinance and fireworks?
I don't know if anyone's ever, I don't know if anyone's ever asked. I mean, Lanark does a private display. I mean, if any civic association next year decided to get the insurance necessary and do whatever and have a, try to have a fireworks display, I imagine we wouldn't stop them, provided they got the appropriate fire department approval and protection.
When anybody asks to have anything related to fire, we always defer to the fire company, the local fire company. You know, if they're gonna have a family barbecue or whatever, we tell them.
Then why not properly have that in our ordinances, rather than have it as something that's the Township Manager, the Township Secretary, have it correct?
I don't know.
As far as I know, the only place you can have it and have it for townships is at Lanark Country Club. That's the latest I know.
But this says differently.
Right.
So-
You could do it at the-
I mean, you've had it at Havreford High School, and that didn't work, and Veterans Field didn't work.
I think you're trying to fix a problem, that is fixing something that isn't broken.
I, I just don't, I don't think we need to touch A, B, C, or D. This is, this is an ordinance about just changing twenty-five to fifteen, and I don't have any idea whether there's any mention of fireworks anywhere else in our code. I don't know what our history is before thirty-five years ago, I don't know what we wanna do next year about fireworks. I wouldn't suggest that we have a debate about fireworks in a conversation about a text amendment of just changing permitted parties and gatherings from twenty-five to fifteen people.
We actually have fireworks provisions in there that are separate, that's why I'm just looking now.
Well, if you wanna make a change, then we could do it at the, at the meeting, and we'll strike it, or we'll, or we'll put it in.
Could do it at the crack.
Okay, but those are your concerns, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right.
Duly noted.
Does anybody else have anything?
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, it's, anything for the MMO?
Wow. Certainly, Amy can make a quick statement about the MMOs that are, that we have to accept every year.
Yes, this is an annual exercise that we do. Every municipality has to certify its MMO by September thirtieth of each year. This is gonna put us on the hook for at least what we have to budget as part of the 2018 budget. So, what we wanna do is the figure that's on line nine of the police and civilian plan, that is the minimum, whether as part of the budget process, we decide to fund more than the minimum, as we've been doing for the past several years, which, as we know, has gotten our funding percentage up pretty significantly over the past few years. We'll have to see if we can do that again once we get through the budget process this year. But for this purpose, what we wanna do is just certify the minimum, and like I said earlier, that, that just puts us on the hook for at least putting the minimum municipal obligation in the 2018 budget.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does anybody have anything else for the interest of the board?
One thing, Lori sent this email to us, is that all right if I report on it? Nancy had sent an email saying that she sent an update regarding backyard chickens. She contacted Delaware County municipalities. None of those that responded allowed chickens in yards with setbacks less than twenty-five feet. Lower Marion, they allow two chickens on properties that don't meet the setback requirements of fifty feet. He stated, this is quite popular and has responded, and has responded to chickens running at large, properties having more than two allowed chickens, removing deceased chickens. He has responded to noise and odor complaints, but stated they are normally corrected after one visit.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything further?
All right.
Wanna make a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Those in favor?
Aye.
We'll see you next week, next Monday.